Councilmember Singleton?
Aye.
Payne?
Aye.
Campion?
Aye.
Cruz?
Aye.
Powers?
Aye.
Okay, we're gonna have a silent prayer and then the flag salute. I know, do you wanna lead us in the salute? I'll take on you because you're out there.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I forgot you again, Steve. Do you have anything to report about the closed session?
Um, PD Mayor, councilmembers. The city council was in closed session this evening on public employee performance evaluation for the city manager. The city council did approve in closed session a fourth amendment to the employment agreement with the city manager. This amendment did not involve any change to the manager's salary, benefits, or compensation.
Thank you. Okay, council, our video thing, please Liz.
The committee that got to the council has been videotaped in its entirety and will be cable cast without interruption on Metro Cable 14, the government affairs channel on the Comcast and Shore West cable systems. Tonight's meeting can be seen on Channel 14 and will also be webcast at www.saxmetrocable.tv this Friday and Saturday mornings at 9:00 a.m. Tonight's meeting can also be seen via live video streaming on the city's website at www.ci.galt.ca.us. A DVD copy is also available for checkout from any library branch. Members of the audience wishing to address council should fill out a speaker identification form and give it to the clerk. Please speak into the microphone when addressing council and state your name for the record.
Thank you. Council, are there any agenda approvals, additions, and/or deletions? Okay, so we'll get on to our presentation, the California Certified Hunter Education with Bruce Bullard.
As many of you know, I'm the, uh, at the Hunter Education Director here in Galt. And I've been supported by the city, um, for the last six years that I've been doing it. In particular, two departments here in the city. Vas Captain Roy Griffith, who's the program administrator with the City of California Fish and Wildlife Department, to join me tonight to show the appreciation that we have for the city and for those two departments, Police Department and Parks and Recreation Department. Captain, where?
Good, thank you all for giving us the time to make this presentation tonight. I have, it's your pleasure having best captain's gig in the state. I supervise eight hundred of the finest employees our state have, volunteers like Bruce and his team. And I do everything I can to make their world a better place. The volunteers, they give their time freely. Anything I can do to make their world a better place is great. And the support that they get here in the city and have historically gotten for years even before Bruce got involved with Shemup Grove before and so forth, and your present chief has just been outstanding. It makes, it's such a great landmark for folks that'll find Hunter Education and know that they can go to their local police department to get it. And it's my understanding that the way it's always been down here is the police department role, it's out the red carpet, providing their community center and their audio visual and everything that goes with it from the range on. So for that reason, we'd like to call the chief up and just present with this award, from the Department of Wildlife, and appreciation for your support of the Hunter Education program and people in the resources state of California. Please accept our sincere thanks for making a difference in the lives of generations of new hunters. So, Chief, sir, I really appreciate your support. Thank you very much. And your entire staff, they take all of our reservations, which makes the world so much easier for this gentleman. The support that you guys do, your Parks and Rec Department does all the intake and everything, which frees him up to do his job and teach the actual class. Thank you, sir.
Turn around for a picture, Paul.
Oh, the other part of that equation is his support, the way he supports it. And like I said, with the class sign and everything is just huge for us. For that, I thank you all, and thank you for your continued support and making the community so friendly to Hunter Education.
That's great, thank you very much. Okay, Diane Christensen, the 106th anniversary of the Sacramento County Library, the Galt Branch.
Good evening, Mayor Mary Lou Powers, city council members, members of the city staff and the general public here. I'm Diane Christensen, Supervisor and U Services Librarian at the Marion Elorin's Library, branch of Sacramento Public Library located at 1000 Caroline Avenue. And here this evening to invite all of you, as you mentioned, to a special event happening at the public library on Saturday, November 15th at 10:00 a.m., a celebration of the 106th anniversary of the Galt Library, which is the second oldest county public library in the state of California. Quite an honor. This event will include a presentation of a gallery of historical photos, a chance to make hand-stamped art from engraved plates created by the late local artist publisher S. Saxton Berry, music performed by a local artist, and of course, a very large birthday cake. The public library here in Galt has changed quite a bit since 1908. Back then, there were mainly a few fiction books and some magazines. In fact, there wasn't even an actual reading room where people could sit down and use library books until 1909, when the old Parks Building, now what stood on the corner of Main Street, now known as C Street, became the library. Today, the library freely offers thousands of books, newspapers, magazines, DVDs, audiobooks in the building on Caroline Avenue, and, in both English and Spanish, and millions more through the 27 other branches of the Sacramento Public Library, slacked through partnerships with dozens of other public and university library systems throughout California and beyond. In addition, there are of course free Wi-Fi and computer usage in a library, plus free ebook and other resource downloads available to PCs, laptops, tablets, e-readers, smartphones, and other mobile devices, any place where you have internet access. But of course, all of it's available with a free library card. Programs in early literacy that help parents engage verbally with their infants, toddlers, preschoolers, along with programs sponsored by the Galt Library Friends geared towards, for example, this Saturday, learning how to make fruit and herbal flavored bread dipping oils and vanilla extract. Body training chefs is this Saturday are also freely provided. Other offerings at the library include twice weekly services of homework coaches who help students and their parents find positive solutions, the school project and homework questions. The weekly services of a job coach who works with folks looking to improve interview resume writing, job searching skills by instructing young ones, resources available in the library webpage and beyond. And two new programs in development, one of which will eventually pair digitally savvy high school honor students with older adults needing one-on-one based computer skills training. The other development program is one which involves a seed library within the public library, which will allow people to borrow seeds and plants, then harvest vegetables, fruits, herbs, and flowers, then save the seeds and bring them back to the library. The public library in Galt has changed quite a lot over the last century, but it continues the same tradition it's always had. Services to the community are supporting lifelong learning and enrichment. Thank you.
Thank you, Diane, I have something for you, so don't, uh, oh.
I guess I could say thank you on behalf of all of those other library personnel through the past 106 years. I'm not going to break out anything from the music man, so don't worry.
Okay, I want to give you this certificate of recognition. We hereby present Marion Elorin's Library, Galt Branch. On behalf of the Galt City Council, we would like to extend to the Marion Elorin's Library special recognition for 106 years of service to the city of Galt and surrounding communities. The Galt Branch was first opened on November 15th, 1908, and was moved to 1993 to its current location. Congratulations.
Okay, now we're at public comment. Liz, do we have some speakers here?
We do. Jim Plaston?
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. My name is Jim Plaston. And I'm here tonight, I'd like to ask the council to reestablish the Architectural Review Committee. The Architectural Review Committee was, uh, put in place so when we, we have a lot of different projects coming to town, as we're having a lot of annexations, we're gonna have developers selling built lots. And all that's we're gonna do to, to say, it's gonna make sure that you buy a home and your house is stucko, has a tile roof, the committee's gonna look at it and make sure that they're getting a light product in the neighborhood. They're not gonna be putting a comp roof on, wood siding, causing your house values to actually go down. So this will be something, we're not, the committee, I believe, is made up of a member of city council, had several members of the community on it, they had an architect, and somebody from planning. I don't remember the whole makeup. But it's just something, if we're gonna be doing annexing a lot of land and having builders buying multiple lots, it just ensures, we're not, we're not there to tell them what they have to build, we're just making sure that what they do build will be of a light product, so it will help our neighborhoods look similar. Because I know, Barbara, you were quite proud of all the work that you did on Lincoln Way, with doing the facades and making the whole, that whole area look really nice. But if we had an architectural review committee, maybe they would've caught what planning missed, planning commission missed, council missed, and maybe they would've stopped Family Dollar from building a large, ugly metal barn right in the middle of Galt. It certainly looks out of place. If anybody in the community, they're gonna tell you, that doesn't belong there. And so when we're spending all that money to make our city look nice, we should've caught that and had them come a little more in line. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jim.
To follow up on that, could we maybe, Mr. City Manager, can we have a report back on what the current process is so that everyone's aware? Because I'm not even sure what that process is today. If that would be good. That way, uh, we'd be able to discuss it publicly.
Sure. As an FYI, too, if I remember correctly, the old Architectural Review Committee did not review commercial buildings. I believe it was only residential buildings. So, but we can certainly bring back something that says what's the, you're interested in the current process for all?
Yeah, what the current processes are, commercial and residential. Commercial and residential, although I think Mr. Plaston was really interested in the residential, but I think we should look at the whole thing. That'd be great.
Okay.
More clarification?
Sure.
A memo to the council or a staff report?
I'd like to have a staff report back and discuss it. That way, Mr. Plaston, if there's others that are interested, they could come back.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we're at the information and consent calendar list. Could you please read the three items?
Yes, number one, approval of the Minister's Special and Regular Meetings on October 21st, 2014. Number two, approval of the City of Galt warrants. And number three, the Emerald Park Unit 22 rezone ordinance adoption.
Do I have a motion to accept?
Move the items.
Second?
Second.
Call for the vote, please Liz. Vice Mayor Singleton?
Aye.
Councilmember Payne?
Aye.
Councilmember Campion?
Aye.
Councilmember Cruz?
Aye.
Mayor Powers?
Aye.
Okay, now we're down to, sorry, oh, I'm sorry. Uh, Treasurer's Office, Treasury Report for period ending September 2014, and that's to you, Mr. Farrell.
Thank you very much. You know, it's unfortunate Diane Christensen just left because I, as a kid growing up here in town, I remember when the library used to be on B Street and Mary, uh, sorry, Marie Olsen used to be the librarian. For those of you who remember Marie Olsen, she was the mother of Marion Elorin's. So, that's, uh, just simply a memory when she was talking about the history of the library. Okay, so far, the Treasurer's Report, um, during the month of September, there was a $6 million CD that came due at Farmer's and Merchants Bank. Uh, we needed some of that money to meet our, uh, current obligations, so I reduced that down to 3 million and re-upped it for, for two years. So right now, we have two CDs at Farmer's and Merchants, one expiring September of, in, in year 2015, and then this one, September in 2016. So those are, those are laddered. With that, uh, let's see, the first quarter interest for this fiscal year amounted to a little bit over $76,000, which, believe it or not, is better than what we had the last fiscal year. So, it's positive, it's slowly positive. And then the yield that we achieved for the month of September was a, was a weighted average of .74. So we're not currently getting about three quarters of a percent on our, on our money. And again, remember, I always go by the safety, safety of the money first. It's your money, I'm not gonna risk it. And then make sure that we meet our obligations for liquidity portion and then, then seek the yield, okay? So with that, I ask that the council approve the Treasurer's Report for September, and I'll field any questions that you may have.
I have any questions, I accept your report.
Call for the vote, please Liz.
Vice Mayor Singleton?
Aye.
Councilmember Campion?
Aye.
Councilmember Cruz?
Aye.
Mayor Powers?
Aye.
Sean, you don't use your acronym anymore, though.
I could, I could. The slide principle, yes, I know, I know.
And that was?
They feel liquidity yield, yep. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, now we're at the strategic plan, and that would be me, and I'm going to, uh... Okay, we're talking about our three-year goals here, and our first goal is to enhance and maintain infrastructure and facilities, and this is the Public Works Director, to ensure the completion of the Police Department re-roofing.
Well, we bid off a large project to completely re-roof the Police Department building, and pleased to report that we're about halfway done. And weather permitting, we should be done within the next couple of weeks. And we should have a roof that should last us for another 10 to 15 years without any concerns whatsoever.
Thank you. Okay, one of our other goals is to enhance economic development. And this one is the city manager pursue and promote locating Delta College south of Galt and north of Liberty Road and reports results to the city council.
Very good. Good evening, members of the city council. We had a meeting with representatives from Delta College. We had a very productive meeting with their consultants and staff last week and exchanging information about what it would take for the city to provide services for the proposed college campus south of the, the city of Galt. So we're continuing to engage with them and exchange information. We're happy to have President of Delta College at the upcoming Education Summit this Thursday evening at Brewster's, so continue to welcome them into our community.
Thank you. Now, another goal is to improve financial stability, and this is the Chief of Police, obtain a long-term youth agreement with CDCR, the California Department of Corrections and Rehabilitation, for improvements to the regional law enforcement training facility.
We actually had a meeting with CDCR today. It appeared to be very positive, and we've been told that they'll be coming back with a draft proposal to the city within the week. So it looks like we're in fact moving forward.
Good, thank you. Okay, and another goal is to attract, develop, and retain quality employees. And this is the Human Resource Administrator and the city manager will gather information regarding the succession planning process and present to the management team for discussion and direction.
Just to give a brief update, Paul has been helpful in providing different samples from other cities, and we've been researching the best practices, policies on succession planning, et cetera. And we have a draft policy we've been working on, hope to be able to share that with the department directors, continue to work in that direction. Succession planning is obviously important for every organization, and so happy to have it on the priority list.
Great, thank you. And last, enhance cultural and youth activities. Mayor Mary Lou Powers and the Chief of Police co-lead, working with Parks and Recreation Director and City Clerk. Identify the need, define the parameters, and solicit interest in establishing a community cultural advisory council and make a recommendation to the city council for action. Uh, we are moving along with this. We've had a couple of meetings, and I've discussed with Steve, uh, the parameters that we need to, uh, and guidelines that we need to get in place, and we will be having a meeting really soon. The Chief, Steve Armando, and I to set that in motion. Okay. Okay, now we're at the city attorney's office, the prohibition regulation of medical marijuana cultivation, and that's to you, Steve.
Good evening again, Mayor and councilmembers. At the last meeting, the city council requested that staff bring back some information on the options available to the city council for the prohibition or regulation of the cultivation of marijuana. And I'm happy to report for once that the law is actually pretty clear in this area, and that's as the result of a Supreme Court decision in March of this year, which related to a ban of marijuana cultivation by the city of Live Oaks, both indoor and outdoor. And Supreme Court declined to hear an appellate court review of that ordinance, which some result is that the law stands that cities are able to ban or regulate the cultivation of marijuana, both indoors and outdoors. So, another win for, for cities. One of the reasons that led to Live Oaks ordinances, as well as some other ordinances locally, is that there has been a very strong proliferation, an increase in the cultivation of marijuana, both indoors and outdoors, but especially within Sacramento County. And as a result of that increase in the cultivation of marijuana, a lot of cities around us have already acted to ban or regulate this cultivation. Most of the cities around us have acted to ban outdoor cultivation. Uh, that includes the county of Sacramento, the city of Sacramento, Elk Grove, Lodi, Folsom. I think the only city that I can think of that allows outdoor cultivation right now is the city of Rancho Cordova, and they do regulate it and limit the amount of area. But except for Rancho Cordova, everybody has moved to ban outdoor cultivation. As it relates to indoor cultivation, I'm not aware of any cities locally that have banned it, um, but everybody regulates it. So they require a permit and they limit the amount of area that can be used for the cultivation of marijuana. It's usually limited to residential areas, and there's a whole host of other conditions that most cities have placed on that indoor cultivation. If the city council desired to move ahead and allow for indoor cultivation of marijuana, we think that the model ordinance we'd recommend to the city is the Folsom Ordinance, which was also adopted, uh, pretty much identically in the city of Rockland. And I've outlined some of the conditions that were in the Folsom Ordinance on page two and three of the staff report. And basically, it limits it to residential dwellings. Uh, the area of cultivation cannot exceed 50 square feet, 10 feet in height. There's some other limitations, but I think the, the one that is probably the most important is probably the last one, which is J. And it says that the cultivation area shall not result in a nuisance or adversely affect the health, welfare, safety of residents or nearby residents by creating dust, glare, heat noise, noxious gases, odor, smoke, traffic, vibration. The point of this last one is that if you end up allowing it indoors and it ends up being a problem, that this particular condition would enable us to deal with the problem created by that, that particular situation. So staff's recommendation, uh, at this point is that you move to prohibit outdoor cultivation, similar to the other surrounding cities, and that if you do desire to allow indoor cultivation, that we use the Folsom Ordinance as a, a model for our local regulation. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions. I don't know if the Chief or Public Works, or I'm sorry, the Committee Development Director have any comments to add at this point in time.
Okay, before the council talks, would you have a speaker, Ms. June Johnson?
Yes, we have a new tract here in Elk Grove, and we lost our tenant because the neighbor who was in a new text that is a tenant is growing marijuana in the backyard. I, I myself believe that all stuff should be done inside if they're gonna do it, and that it should be limited, very limited, maybe that's as little as five plants. Uh, so that we have a lot of traffic. We've been working on that place, and we, on the Friday, there was a lot of traffic going by that place, in and out, in and out. And I've even seen, I've seen two guys jump the back fence of that yard and come back out. And my husband was working on the fence, and he saw a couple of guys doing the same thing. It's a real nuisance, and not to mention the dogs they have guarding that stuff that has broken down the fence. And my husband's in the backyard actually rebuilding that fence. Uh, it's a real nuisance, and, uh, we went to the police, they couldn't do anything. Um, I mean, it's, it's like you wonder, unless Galt does something, should we just start renting to people that do that because that's all we can do? It's not there. It makes it real hard on, we tried to rent to good people, and, uh, so they can have a good life and at a reasonable rate where this tenant is paying 1,100 a month for a place that should only rent for at the lowest 900. Uh, and he gets a book loan to grow marijuana. So, anyway, I'd get growing marijuana.
Thank you very much. Council?
Question, staff? Chief, um, or city attorney, whoever, um, has, is there any reported difficulties, say, with Folsom, with the indoor activity? I mean, has anybody, are you aware of any problems with the ordinance as it is in effect there?
I have not, um, received any information from the Folsom Chief regarding any issue regarding indoor.
I'm not aware either. It's been on the Folsom books for probably about two years now without any modification, but I haven't checked recently with, say, the city attorney to see if there's any issues.
Mar?
I've read through the, uh, the Folsom rules and regulations, and nowhere in it does it mention anything about children. I have a real issue with this. If, and I, it's a big if for me, that we're allowed to be indoors, what are we doing to protect children who are residing in the residence? It just, I'm, I'm kind of on the side of, let's not cultivate it at all. Yes, the law says it has to be provided for medical purposes, that's fine. It doesn't mean it has to be cultivated in our town.
Well, uh, we've heard from a couple of citizens also that is concerned because of the fact that if it's grown out, outdoors, the smell is not contained to that backyard, it becomes offensive. Uh, and that is a major problem in growing marijuana outdoors. If I had my wish that I...
If I had my wish, but I, I know we can't do it, if someone has a medical marijuana card, they all have to go to the drugstore and get a prescription, just like any other kind of medicine, but that's beyond our ability to, to restrict. Now, Folsom, you have to get a permit, is that correct, in order to grow it?
That's correct. That's for, for indoor grow, grow marijuana.
And what are the restrictions, or what, what are the provisions under the permit?
So the, the permit, the permit is only issued for growth marijuana in residential areas, so within a residential home. It needs to be limited to 50 square feet within the home. There's a limit on the, the amount of power that can, can be utilized in the cultivation area. Can't be, they can't use any gas products in order to, to promote the cultivation of the, the marijuana. Can't be visible from outside the dwelling unit.
Full-time resident?
Full-time resident, needs to be in the, in the unit. They can't be growing anywhere else in, in the city, so it's limited to just that one location. The residence needs to be fully functional, which means it needs to be in a house that has a kitchen, bathroom, bedroom. Those are the, those are the primary, primary.
Is there a fee for that permit?
I don't recall whether there's a fee or not.
Does it give, say, have a permit, does it give the police department any provisions for inspecting or code enforcement to see that they're complying?
No, it doesn't, it doesn't allow any additional access to the, to the residence beyond what we would otherwise be allowed. Typically, what, what we find is that if law enforcement is called to a particular residence, and they go in and they find a marijuana grow, and it's in a, in a jurisdiction where it can only be done pursuant to permit, then it would provide another ground for, for law enforcement action or code enforcement.
I guess my concern is, listening to the citizen that spoke, is in her instance, it created a lot of traffic that sort of indicated maybe it was more than medicinal purposes. How would we be able to enforce something like that at work, so?
Well, we would do it by, by limiting it to the, to the square footage, the 50-square foot limit. It doesn't mean that, you know, everybody that is going to do an indoor grow is going to come and get a permit and limit it, but if we find a location through, through any means that is doing an indoor grow that doesn't have a permit, or that exceeds the, the limit, then we would be able to pursue remedies against them.
So I would ask you, if this happens, someone has a permit, and they're growing marijuana, but it appears that it's being sold, would you have any authority to, to look into it? Because they have a permit, that you have access then to check and see that it's legal?
Yes, if in fact the neighbors were saying there's a lot of traffic. Our problem runs into the fact that the law allows for a collaborative, so people can share as far as the use, and if I was an injured individual and I can't grow my own marijuana, I could go to see somebody else to get that from them, and I could share and watch ground. There becomes the issue as far as are they really buying, and can we prove it?
Can that be addressed by a local ordinance?
So, so I think the distinction here is that the issuance of a permit in itself does not provide access to a residential dwelling. I think what the, the Chief described is that if we have information which is evidence of probable cause of a crime being committed at a residence, that that would enable us to get a warrant and then access that residence. Is that, is that consisting of what you were explaining?
That's correct.
Then, then why couldn't you have addressed her call when she said it looked like there were an excess number of cars going in and out to that house?
We'd have to have more than just an excess number of cars. We would probably end up with a surveillance on there, end up going through some techniques as far as the individuals leaving, to develop it, and there's quite a lengthy process to develop information, to receive a warrant, especially with marijuana now, with the current views on it as far as being medical versus what it was a few years back.
I'd like your opinion of the Folsom permit.
Well, my opinion is it shouldn't be allowed anywhere, but since it was passed as far as being the Medical Compassion Act, then I think that the warrant as far as Folsom would probably give us the best. But we're not going to be able to enter the house unless we have information regarding some type of sales, and then we would go in as far as inspection with a warrant, and even then, I don't know if we'd be able to in fact prove that in fact they were selling, unless we had an informant who was saying they were in fact buying from this individual.
Two more things. Rancho Cordova addresses multifamily cultivation, like in an apartment. Is that something that we would need to also include?
Yes, we would have to decide whether or not it was something that you wanted to allow within just single-family residential, or within any residential, which would include multifamily growing.
And then my last question, could we write into the permit, just as code enforcement can inspect anything else, that they could be expected to see if they were complying with the requirements of the permit?
Yes, I think we could write that in, and it would be, it would be subject to providing reasonable notice to the, to the property owner, to the residential owner, in order to gain access. Kind of similar to basically the way a landlord has reasonable access to a, to a tenant unit.
I think that that's something that we need to look at, to report. If you made it a personal use, and it is personal, I mean, if there's people trying to sell it, couldn't you limit it to how many you could grow, or?
Well, I think some of the difficult.
Did they do that?
The number of plants under state law, what's it, like 99?
It started out when they enacted a law on basically 12 plants, and with a decision from a court, a competent court, they decided that a person could grow up to 99 plants. And that's some of our problems when we go through these outdoor grows, we're sitting there counting, and they know what the lies, and they have 98 or 99, and that's it. And you're looking at roughly a pound to almost three pounds, depending on the plant. So if you calculate that out with 99 plants, that's a lot of marijuana.
How many do we have in town that you're aware of?
That we're aware of? We actually have a list of people who have contacted us. We go and contact the individual who's growing. They produce their marijuana card, which allows them to grow it. And I'm aware of, I think, seven, eight. But I think we might have one as of tonight that we're not aware of.
So that answers the Mayor's question about the number. That's one of the predicaments that cities have, is that if state law says that a, somebody with a medical marijuana card can have 99 plants, we can't enact a local ordinance which sets a lower number. But we can regulate whether it's grown within our jurisdiction, and if it is grown, what the land use restrictions are, and so the, that's why most of the ordinances, instead of saying number of plants, they limit it to a square footage.
Yeah, that kind of makes sense.
Quick, quick questions. Legal ramifications, if we were to go with option four, what would it be to the city? Option four basically says medical marijuana cultivation could be prohibited outdoors and indoors completely.
Well, I think we have the legal right to enact an ordinance that prohibits outdoor and indoor grows completely.
Thank you.
But that also, I'm sorry, it was so quiet. That could also be challenged in court, there'd be a little, I think it would be something that would be challenged by the state, people that say the state has allowed us to grow marijuana.
Not according to the Supreme Court.
That's, that's actually the, the City of Live Oak ordinance was a, a restriction, a prohibition on indoor and outdoor grow, and that was upheld by appellate court, and then the Supreme Court declined to review that decision, so.
That's one you were talking about.
That is a, that is solid legal precedent at this point, and I think it would be on, on solid legal ground if the City Council desired that they wanted to prohibit both indoor and outdoor.
And I'm sorry, Mayor, I didn't think about this here. May I say something else, please?
Yes.
Okay. I, I gotta agree with the Chief, and, and actually, I'm excited with Mr. Cruz, too. I assume not have her at all. The one thing that wasn't mentioned, and some people may or may not realize, is the chemicals that are used to grow that stuff outdoors. When it drains out of those pots, it goes right into the ground. And we're on wells, and we're, we're on well water. So that's another hazard of this outdoor grow. So I'm in favor of either Folsom, or as Mr. Cruz seems to be suggesting, eliminating it, as long as we don't have any legal ramifications from that, and as, as Mr. Rudolph has said, we stand on solid grounds, so.
You know, and I generally agree, except that I, I'm concerned that if the city takes a, you know, takes such a heavy-handed action, that there are people out there, I suspect, that have a legitimate use, and, and that's the concern I have is by, you know, just because they're not here tonight, that we would unilaterally eliminate something that otherwise they have done legitimately, and, and, you know, in the right context of the law. On the other side, I, I also, I, I could, I do agree with the elimination of the outdoor grow. That makes complete sense. But I just wonder how, if we, how far we can go over that line to accommodate landlords that legitimately need that for their own personal use. And I think that's the concern. I think all of us are kind of struggling with that, is, you know, where do you draw that line?
Agree.
Well, I think the, the one answer that Steve said was limiting the square footage.
Square footage, and that's in the ordinance, the 50 square feet.
I guess the issue that I'm having with this, I understand the Compassionate Use Act, but I also have to take in consideration people who own property. So you've got somebody who's renting a piece of property to an individual, and this individual's growing marijuana in that, in that location. When they move out, that piece of property or that residence is pretty much screwed up, it's totally torn apart, because as you and I both know, Chief, that permeates everything in the room. Sheet rock has to come out, the flooring has to come out, probably all of the ducting has to be removed, because that's going to remain.
I didn't know that.
She didn't know permeated the walls and whatnot. Now, could not these landlords put a stipulation, I, I know we'll kind of go off for a little bit, in their agreements that they will not allow any kind of medical marijuana being grown in their homes?
Yes, similar, I mean, just like some landlords don't allow pets in their units, certainly a landlord can, can decide to put a provision in their lease that you cannot grow marijuana in their unit.
Okay.
Even if the jurisdiction does, doesn't have an ordinance to back it up?
Correct.
Really?
Well, that's good. Just a suggestion. Okay, good girl.
Okay, Council, do we have any motions? What would you, what would your pleasure be here?
I, I'm still, I, I still want to make the motion for us to accept option four, which is medical marijuana cultivation could be prohibited outdoors and indoors completely within the residence, within the city of Folsom.
And I gotta fall back on the Folsom regulation myself, with all due respect, Mark.
I have no problem with that, but.
So I, I don't know, I don't, is that a motion for?
Well, wait a minute. Are you on a way in or?
I, I asked my question. I just would want, if we, if we go with Folsom, I would like to see if we could increase some weight enforcement, maybe through code enforcement, or with the police department, to be sure that they are complying with what they're supposed to.
And I would make a motion as amended.
Before you go too far with that, let's pull up and have my question answered about youth and children in the residence, as far as the adverse effects to them when it's being, when it's being grown.
I'd say the parents should be.
Yeah.
But did you do have a motion, though?
Yes, I did.
You have a motion?
Okay, you don't want it inside or outside.
No, I do not.
I have to say that, um, I do.
I would second that. I, I would. I would. And the reason I say that is because the Chief says that there's only seven known grows, outdoor grows. And I, and I say that to the extent that if this is approved, and then there, the, the police department has an enforcement tool, if truly there is a need, we will hear about it. And the city can amend an ordinance. So I, I would rather take the more conservative approach, after kind of rethinking this, take the conservative approach with an open mind.
Okay, 'cause I thought you just said that.
I did.
Well, you know, if people do need it, and I think that, you know.
And I think about the numbers, if there are only seven known outdoor grows.
They don't know how many's in growing it for their own personal.
Well, and that's my point. I, I don't know. I don't know.
Maybe we should continue this and allow for a public input.
So just as a.
Yeah, that's fine, too.
Mayor, just as a point of clarification, if, if the motion does pass, it's his direction to staff, it's not the adoption of the ban.
Right, okay.
So it'd be to direct staff to prepare the ordinances prohibiting the cultivation. And since this would be a land use regulation, we would prepare the draft ordinance, we would go to the Planning Commission, hold a public hearing, get the Planning Commission recommendation, then bring it back to the City Council for action. So there would be an opportunity for a public comment during, during that process, and I also wanted just to make it clear that you're not actually enacting the law this evening.
Right, okay. And, and, and I'd also like to point out that when the city went through the process of, of trying to get rid of a couple of dispensaries in town, the only people that were here were the people that were funding the dispensaries. I don't recall any local individual saying, hey, look, I, you know, I need this for personal use.
You're right.
Well, no, I do believe we did have one or two, 'cause I remember.
But I don't recall, and, but I, I, so I just don't, I, I'm not sure what that need is, and like I said, we could always amend it if, if it appears necessary.
Sure.
Okay, so I have a motion and a second, correct?
Yes.
Do you want to read what it is, so we know?
It's option number four.
Correct.
To prohibit indoor and outdoor grows within the city of Folsom.
Okay, copy and go, please.
Okay, Vice Mayor Singleton?
I gotta stand on what I first read, and my, my first gut feeling is I'd have to say no on this for now, with all due respect.
Councilmember Payne?
Aye.
Councilmember Campion?
Aye.
Councilmember Cruz?
Aye.
Mayor Powers?
Aye, because he's gonna come back with.
Yep.
Okay, four one, with Vice Mayor Singleton.
Right, right.
Okay. Okay, now with the Public Works Department, the further consideration of water meter installation fees.
Mayor and Council members, this item is being brought back at the direction of the mayor, and it's to give further consideration to the water meter installation fees recently adopted by the council after a public hearing on August 19th of this year. The council's received several presentations and considered options, and provided policy guidance related to the water meter installation project on multiple occasions over the past two-plus years. The proposed fees that were ultimately adopted by the council did reflect an attempt to equitatively balance the cost of installing the new meters and automated data collection system between customers that have previously paid for meters and those who have not. The adopted fees represent the basic cost for installation in a meter-ready location. Majority of the properties affected by the meter installation fee are actually in older neighborhoods that do not have existing meter boxes, and that requires special fittings for installation. The adopted fees typically recover less than 50% of the actual installation cost in these non-meter-ready neighborhoods. Any costs that are not recovered through installation fees must ultimately be spread to all customers through increased water fees. And within the staff report you received for this item tonight, we've given you a breakdown of the various components of the recently adopted installation fees to assist you in decision-making and understand the financial implication. decision-making and understand the financial implications of any interest in revising the various fee components. We stand ready to implement any modifications to the adopted fees that the council may direct. We would ultimately bring an item back based on your direction tonight for final adoption. And that does conclude my presentation. If you have any questions the council may have, we'll receive direction.
And the reason I had it brought back is for more clarification, more than anything else, because there was so much misinformation going around, that I just thought, and it was such a, shall we say, heated meeting, that I thought a lot of misinformation was going about, and so I just wanted to reiterate it again, the reasons why this was happening. Do we have any comments on this? Yes?
Well, I wanted to reiterate what I had said at that previous meeting. I still think we should eliminate the fees and the interest rates, and extend the period from three to five years for the individuals. It's, the biggest people you're gonna be affecting here are low-income and seniors, and ten dollars a month is a lot of money for those people. At least cut that in half, and that's what this would do.
Council?
I, I looked at this, I mean, I still don't support the fee, but I looked at it more closely and maybe in a different light. When you, when you look at the number of units, and Steve, the seven thousand and eighty services, those are the residential you're talking about, correct? Those are all residential. So, for purposes of the distribution here, you've got about twenty-eight, almost twenty-nine hundred that paid no meter, have, does not have a meter and paid no fee. You have nine hundred and fifty that have meter service, thirty-two hundred and fifty paid a deposit. And that deposit, from what I could tell from city records, was anywhere from, I think, two hundred to maybe four hundred dollars, depending upon the year it was paid, from nineteen ninety up to, what was it, two thousand and seven?
Uh, yeah.
Or two thousand, two thousand and five? I thought I read it's two thousand and seven. But my point is, in looking at the staff report that you included here tonight, and also at the August nineteenth, I looked at some of the questions, and for purposes of understanding as a percentage, about forty-one percent of all residential services did not pay a fee and do not have a meter. So, the balance, fifty-nine percent either paid a fee or had a meter installed. How this program is being paid is that the meter installation fees will be for new meters, obviously, that's what it's for. And it says the water system replacement and water system replacement reserves for existing meters. Is that to mean that the nine hundred and fifty meters that are in the ground, because my understanding is we can't use those, they're gonna have to be replaced with other meters, is that correct?
Yeah, if they're recently installed new meters, they can be outfitted with the radio read device. If they're more than four or five years old, recommend replacement for a nominal additional cost.
Last four or five years within issuing permits, so, yeah. So, in essence, the nine hundred and fifty meter services are gonna be paid for out of reserves, and that's the water reserve for all ratepayers, correct?
That's correct.
I guess, in order to give credit to those individuals who have our pre-nineteen ninety water meter services, and that would go back to nineteen forty-six, those twenty-eight hundred and eighty-three people, or people or residents, should, they've made a contribution to that reserve as well, at least since nineteen forty-six and through that some period of time. My belief is, a more appropriate recommendation would be that they, that forty-one percent of their three hundred dollar fee be paid from reserves, just like the other meters are being paid out of reserves to the property owners. Because otherwise, what you've done is you've allocated the cost for all nine hundred and fifty meters that are being replaced to not only the twenty-eight hundred that didn't pay a fee and don't have a meter, but also the ones that paid a deposit. So, I think as a matter of equity, it would make more sense to take it out of reserve or give them credit for that portion of services and recognize that they have contributed to that reserve. That would amount to a fee of about a hundred and seventy-seven dollars. Forty-one percent of three hundred.
Steve, what's next up to the reserve? Where did that come from?
Well, we, in a perfect rate structure, about half of your fees go for operating costs, and chemicals, and electricity, and maintenance, repairing water leaks. Typically, about half of the fee should be going into long-term reserves for replacements when wells fail or rehabilitating wells. We just did a major project this year. Eventually, pipelines will begin to leak and need to be replaced. God forbid we've got an earthquake, we'd have major failures all over town. And so, those reserves would be to, as system components wear out at the end of their service life, that they would have money over their lifetime, that money's been being put aside to replace that. Candidly, very few, even public utilities, much less municipal utilities, are able to set their rates to do that. So, we probably typically, it's more about eighty percent of your rate is hand-to-mouth operating costs, and, you know, we're setting aside a little bit for the future, and typically, what doesn't get set aside gets made up with a rate increase, and we have to replace that water line or build that new well. Our last D-12 cost close to two million dollars, so, you know, by time we got treatment costs. So, those are major capital improvements, so, if you have it in reserves, you don't have to raise rates, but your rates would need to be higher now. If you don't have it in reserves, you then raise rates at the type of need. So, it's a balancing act.
So, the people that bought homes and their homes were, like, meter-ready, they paid a fee if their home was built, like, after, was it two thousand and nine?
They either paid a deposit and installed the boxes with the price of their home, or embedded within the price of their home was an actual meter installation.
And so, did that money go into the reserves? Where did that money go?
They furnished through their builder and through the price of their home, the meter or paid a deposit. That deposits that were paid went into a meter reserve fund. Now, by prior action of this council, in the last two years, we took the money, about one point two or three million dollars, out of the meter reserve and put it into this CIP project that's currently under construction to offset the costs of those meters, and the remainder of the funding was borrowed.
So, it didn't go into the reserve account?
It started in the reserve, but when we awarded the contract, we moved it from reserves into the construction funding for the CIP project.
Is what Kurt said to you, is that figure kind of making sense? And it is kind of troubling that nine hundred and fifty of the water meters don't work.
They work, but they won't support the automated meter reading protocol that we're moving towards, the smart meters, which allow us to save labor costs and individually reading meters. So, we, all of those costs are being spread to all users, because all users would then benefit from the cost savings of not having to go out and read the meters. So, we had to upgrade the existing meters to be able to do that. And you don't wanna, well, I would recommend against reading half the town and not having to...
Yeah, I get that.
So, there was an economy of scale discussion that preceded my tenure here and prior policy direction, and there was agreement with that recommendation, and so, sort of where we are with the current project is to go citywide. You started with a question of do I agree with sort of the math perspective that Councilmember Campion suggested, and the answer is, I understand what he's suggesting, and I don't disagree with the sentiment, but a couple of sort of aspects that I think go into that consideration are, our rates were much lower back in the nineteen forties, fifties, sixties, and seventies, so...
Eighties, nineties.
And eighties and nineties. So, we weren't, they weren't putting money aside for meters as part of their rate. The other thing is, as noted, that we're, the meter fees that are adopted in those older neighborhoods cover less than half the actual installation cost. So, in essence, the general ratepayers are already subsidizing those. The question is, how much subsidy do you want to provide as part of your rate discussion?
And I agree, that's part of the problem. The three hundred dollars is a number that was pretty much pulled out of the air, because if you go to look at, in the older part of that, and there's different parts of town where you're gonna have different costs. And I recognize that you need to land on a number, but it doesn't represent, you know, some could be considerably less, some will be considerably more. I just felt that the issue of making recognition that they have been ratepayers, and that if there is a reserve, even if you go back to the early days when they didn't collect, they were still part of paying into that system. This is a system-wide upgrade, and since nineteen ninety, they've paid whatever the fee has been, and if there is revenue that's being put aside through the rate for this project, yeah, then they should, I think should be recognized, and I just believe that it's a fair proportion of cost.
Let me just add one thing, 'cause I think what Steve said is accurate. I think the council can choose any dollar amount at once. I think three hundred dollars was a reasonable amount based on the cost of the meters and the cost of an average installation. Could it be less? Could it be more? Yes, you could certainly make an argument and justify it either way. The bottom line is, we don't have a lot of money in the water reserve. So, any amount that you decrease from three hundred dollars means, it doesn't just come out of reserve, it comes out of all the ratepayers. What that means is, future increases to pay for that amount. So, if you decrease it to two hundred, one hundred, or zero, then that means that those costs now get spread across all ratepayers in the city, which the council can do. Legally, you can decide that those people should not have to pay three hundred dollars or two hundred dollars or four hundred dollars, but that it should be a cost borne by the entire system, and that's certainly something the council could do. You just have to recognize that that's what you would be doing by doing that.
Yeah, we have to recognize that there are people out there...
Those would be future costs, because this is already out of reserves. Reserves are not a cost. Reserves are monies that would be spent only if you're going to raise rates to increase reserves.
And we're anticipating the revenue from this three hundred dollars, to pay back the debt service, to replenish any reserves that we have, and so, if that money does not come in, that means we will have to raise rates in order to recover those costs. Not in the future...
Reserves are insufficient to pay it.
Correct.
Okay.
And I do see that the interest rate went down to three percent, correct? And the administrative fee and the interest rates are important with the funding that you just said, to make everybody not have to pay everything?
Yeah.
That's a real catch-twenty-two, kind of.
It's really a faulty decision. I think what staff's done is outline costs associated with the program, kind of where we are, and it's up to the council to decide how to kind of apportion and distribute those costs. The cost is borne by the water utility, right? And how, and the most equitable and fair way of distributing those costs is certainly, you know, up to the council, I think we've provided the information that you have, you know what those costs are, and, you know, if the council wants to provide some additional direction, or wants to change the previous direction that was given, we're certainly happy to do that. It doesn't, it doesn't affect our ability to deliver the program.
If I may offer just one additional thought that just came to me, you're talking about who's paid for reserves and whatnot. I should point out that in the areas that don't have meters, they're on a flat rate, and they get unlimited usage for that flat rate. Those areas that have meters are paying for everything that they use, every gallon they paid more for. So, probably within our rate structure, there's already some inequity. We do notice that generally, so we don't know exactly how much each home is using, but on average, it appears, and we can sort of extrapolate, that the areas that are metered are using about half the water per cap or per connected that are being used in the flat rate.
They're paying the same amount.
So, you know, these are all intangibles that we can't specifically point to within the rate structure, that, you know, we believe that moving everybody to metered rates provides the highest level of equity for future rate structures that everybody pays for what they use.
And along those lines, I just want to get this out, I firmly believe that a single-tier rate structure would be the most appropriate as well, because I don't think we need to have punitive rate structures in cities. If everybody, if somebody uses more, they pay more on a single-tier rate structure. And I would like council to give that serious consideration when it gets to the point where we need to make a decision on how these rates are gonna be implemented, because I think it's gonna be shocking. There are so many uncertainties on this whole system. We don't know what the consumer reactions are gonna be, we don't know what the system efficiency is going to be. And the other item that I've really struggled with is, I think we need to have dual readings for much longer than the two months that's been proposed. I think dual readings should be for no less than a year, so that you can actually see for a full year what those costs are gonna be in the usage, so that staff can then utilize that to look at, okay, what would be a good rate structure, and try and hit it on the nose, because I think we're gonna be all over the map if we do anything other than that, 'cause we simply don't have the data to support it. Anyway.
Kelly, Kiki?
Hi, my name is Kelly Kiki, I live in Gulf City Limits. My main concern isn't the three hundred dollar fee. I think, you know, for those of us who paid, we have to pay it. You know, I don't agree with the, you know, the finance charges and, you know, the additional, you know, fees that we were gonna charge to let them repay that. I do have a friend that is. We do currently, you know, we read her, her water meter, and she paid her house bill, just the water, was a hundred and forty-five dollars. Family of three, and I paid fifty-six. That's my concern, is, you know, that's huge. So, people worry about five dollars, ten dollars. That's a sixty-one percent higher fee than what I pay. So, I have a family of four, she's a family of three, you know, and so, if we know, the people that are paying now are reading those meters, we know, that's the public record, you know, what's the lowest that community is paying, and what's the highest. So, we can, we can kind of guess, is anybody paying fifty-six dollars? I mean, are they? I don't know. People that work, we're actually reading those meters, but can we get that low one for a meter? I don't know.
I can give you some anecdotal information, my neighborhood is on meters, and typically what you see is, in the wintertime, your rate is much less than that, fifty dollars. In the summertime, it's gonna be higher, and it depends on how much water you use. And I've noticed myself, as I've, you know, gone on vacation, cut back on irrigation and so forth, it's gone down significantly. So, I think it really depends on, and the good thing about meters is you can control how much water you use. So, if you want to have a lush, and typically, the most water used is in the outdoor landscaping, so if you want to have a really lush yard and so forth, you're gonna pay for it. But if you want to conserve, or you want to install some, you know, drought-tolerant plants and so forth, you can absolutely get your rates down to a reasonable level.
Fifty-six dollars?
Yep.
On the average?
Yep. That's, our rates are established so that the average amount, if you use an average amount of water, your rate will be the same as the flat rate. So, if you're using more than the average amount of water, your rate, your bill would be higher than that. If you're using less than the average amount, this is just averages.
Was yours fifty-six dollars? Does it pass math?
I couldn't tell you. I couldn't tell you.
'Cause my friend lives in your neighborhood, on the other side, off of Rock Hall, so, yeah, I was shocked. I was like, okay, people are worried about this whole fee, wait till you see your first...
I would not assume, I wouldn't look at one person to indicate that that's what everybody's gonna experience.
Right, right. I'm just saying, yeah.
The city doesn't, the utility system doesn't need to generate any more money than what's being generated presently, so, you know, the system needs to run in an efficient and cost-effective manner, and so, overall, the total revenue generated by the program will be about the same as it is now. And so, what that means is, yes, some people are paying more, some people are paying less, but on the average, it's gonna be similar to what the, what the flat rate's gonna be.
That's not gonna be a total sticker shot.
Well, that's what's hopeful, hopeful.
Yeah, we don't know until we get it, until we get it out there, but that's, you know, and if it looks, and if, and if everybody's rates go up by sixty percent, that means we're generating too much revenue, so that means that the rates go down in order to get it to the same level we are now. So, that's... So that's, I mean, that's the way it would balance out.
Jason, do you know what we are using to calculate the average number of gallons per family?
I don't know what that number is. I know Clarkson was here, he'd have it off the top of his head.
We could compare it to how many gallons.
Yeah, well, a couple of things. First of all, that's probably a two-month bill, monthly would be half of that. But the way, we don't know how much individual homes are using in the un-metered areas, we have no idea. So what we have to do is take the total water produced, back out the commercial and residential meters, and what's left, divide by the number of un-metered residents, to come up with those per capita or per connection estimates. Now, there's always going to be leaks and losses in the system, and fire hydrant use and different things. So again, that's not meters, so, you know, we're guessing. But that's the beauty of going to meters, is then we have a tool to use. But where is the water going, who's using it, how much are we losing to system leaks? It also gives individual property owners an opportunity to, we actually would get notifications that they go a 24-hour period without any zero-use hourly increments. Those meters are actually talking to the computer hourly. And if we go 24 hourly increments without a zero read, we get a potential leak alert. So then we would go out and notify the homeowner, and we just had a commercial property here in town that got hit with a combined commercial pays for water, and then their sewer bill is based on how much water they use. And they got a $5,000 bill for a two-month period, because they had a vacant building that had a running toilet, that ran for 60 days. Got a huge bill, and so, you know, because nobody's there, a monthly bill, you don't know that. But with these new smart meters, we'll actually get notices to go out and check. So we'd get those through the city system, and then we'd have our guys go out, leave the door hanger, they go check to make sure you don't have any faucets running, or kids didn't leave a faucet on in the backyard, or whatever. So instead of waiting two months to get that sticker shock, we'd hopefully know within a period of a week or two. So there's an upside to Big Brother with the smart meters, is it's a simple tool to help you manage your bill. Plus, we'll have an online web lookup, where you can look at your history and your recent usage, and see some of that real-time information, instead of waiting for your bottom-up bill.
So we can take that lid off our thing, if we can actually read what it was?
There is, there is a way, and we'll be updating our website with how you do that. But more importantly is, you can go online and look at your historical data, which would be probably more up-to-date than waiting for the bill, you know, a month or two later.
So do we know when this, when we're, when it's going to be done, as far as when we'll do those mock billings? Will it be like a realistic month, like summer, or is it going to be?
We have a proposed schedule, and I'm hearing council comments of concern with how many of those we do. But our current proposal would be to try to get out with a, the meters we hope will be installed by this next spring, maybe by March. And then we could start doing data collection for a two-month mock billing that would come out maybe in the late, late spring, early summer period, and then one that would come out, the second one, that would be sort of the July, August, you know, sort of a worst-case two-month billing.
Yeah, one at $100 from that.
So people can say, hey, I need to adjust my spring layers, or look for leaks, or whatever. But, you know, that's kind of, you know, we'll look at your council for direction. But that's the, the current information we put out to the public is, two-month bills, which are covered four-month periods. State law does allow up to a year before we, to let us do comparison notice.
Okay, I think we're going to need to kind of reel back in a little bit, if you don't mind. Okay, thank you. Because we're, you know, I would like to ask council then, what are your thoughts on that? I'll say what mine is. I don't like the administrative fee, and, but the problem is, we don't know how many people are going to elect the option to take it on monthly payments. I'm assuming, like council member Cruz does, that that'll be the people that will find it very hard to pay. So I don't have a problem with making it five years. But if we're on a loan, then there has to be a 3% interest payment. I just, you know, 3% is really not enough.
Can I ask-
So I guess we're all over.
Okay. Just following up on your comment. What finance is the process as far as, if someone decides to finance theirs over a period of time, how much work is generated? I guess that would be to your department, to the county, and then if someone doesn't pay for that, how much work is involved? Because I know, you have a lot of work, and you can only do so much, so if you're doing this instead of that, what's the effect? Sorry to make you get up.
Well, right now, what we're currently working on is just a list of all the properties that will be assessed, the $300 charge, or whatever that dollar value is. So we're, at this point, basically going to be compiling a list of those properties, and those payments are coming in. So that's kind of like an offline accounting that we're currently in the process of.
So you're talking about some hours of work?
Right, because there really is, we have a listing from Public Works, and we're trying to, want to send out these letters that says, here's the date by when you need to pay by. And then we'll end up with a list that basically presents, those are the homes, or those students that still have a balance of $300, or whatever that dollar value is. And then we would work on trying to add that to the utility bill in a monthly amount, so you see a certain charge every cycle. So right now, I think this is what we're currently working on, is trying to determine those parcels, and how to track those payments of them. Because it's really a manual process right now. We're looking at address, we're limited on parcel numbers, based on information from the county. So that's really kind of a, a time-consuming process right now. But, I mean, it comes to that house to be done, so we can act and report those parcels that have a balance that will be due.
So the fee is actually going towards, help cover the cost of your accounting, and your follow-up in your billing?
I believe that that administrative cost does cover that. It's not the full amount, but I believe that that is part of that.
Is there a reason that wasn't put in the rate structure? That cost?
In the overall rate structure?
Correct.
Well, I think we were still trying to determine how many of the property owners would be paid upfront versus wanting to extend it over a certain period. So I don't think we really knew what that amount was at the time.
So there's no benefit to the overall system, the HTE improvements you're talking about?
Well, right now, we're tracking it offline.
Okay. So when will it go online?
Once we decide what that date will be, what that dollar value will be, we'll say $300, or $310, or, once we figure out what that amount is, we're going to give the property owners an opportunity to pay that full amount by a certain date.
Okay.
And then those parcels that still remain with an outstanding balance, and that amount will go on to the utility bill.
So this is a single project with no other benefit, is what you're saying?
At this point.
Okay, I get you.
Do I have any motions?
I have one more question.
Okay.
If we use our reserves to pay the fee, so we didn't charge anybody, what impact would that have on our fiscal development? Through your best.
We don't have enough current reserves to pay for the installation project, so we borrowed the money for the project. So really, the fees paid are to reduce that debt, so that we don't have to raise fees to pay debt service. So we've already borrowed the money, and we're locked in, can't pay it off for at least 10 years, I believe, is a prepayment exclusionary period, if I recall correctly. And so, there's not an immediate, but we will have a future rate study, once we get usage data, probably in a year or two, we'll have some good usage information, and what our actual costs are, and are people conserving, and, you know, some of those aspects will be looked at. And at that point, we'll have, you know, whatever revenue we've received, anything that isn't paid down, or any remaining debt, will have to go into the rate structure for repayment.
In other words, everybody's needs would go up.
Correct.
Okay. Well, do we have any motions to change it, or leave it like it is, or?
I, I'll go ahead and make the motion. I move that we, we have staff go back and represent this with a five-year pay period, and the elimination of the administrative fees and interest.
Could we get that report back when we know how many people do in fact have to, are not going to pay the, you know, full amount? I mean, I've talked to a lot of people that I know are going to pay the full amount right off. So, I mean, we're working with no numbers, and not knowing, you know, how many people this would really affect. I mean, 2,000 people could pay the $300, you know what I mean? So.
When you send out the notice that they owe the $300, you also need to indicate, if they don't pay, what the monthly amount is going to be. And that might indicate, or dictate, how many people pay the fee. So if you said it's $300, or if you don't pay the fee upfront, it's going to be $5 a month for the next five years, that's one decision point that they're going to have to make. If it's $10 a month for three years, that's a different decision. So you really do, before you send out the notice and figure out what you're going to do, you need to figure out what that monthly repayment amount is going to be, and the period and time which you're talking about. Otherwise, people aren't going to be able to make that decision.
Right, right, right. So you're looking at a long period of time to come up with that information?
Right.
Tell everybody what they're going to do.
If your question is, how many people are going to offer the payment plan?
Yeah, we have no idea.
The figures we've given you in the staff report, the up to amounts are assuming that if all 2,880 non-meter customers offered, that would be the maximum amount of revenue related to the fees, or the interest, or whatever. My guess is that probably half, maybe half the folks that get the fee might pay it upfront, that's a wild guess. And the other half would want to finance it over a period of time.
Bushman's still there.
Okay, what's the motion again, I'm sorry.
The motion is to send it back to staff to bring back a report for us to vote on regarding extending the pay period to five years, removing the interest rate, and the administrative fees.
You said removing the interest rate and the administrative-
And the administrative fees, correct.
I believe that would bring the monthly charge down to $5 a month for five years, instead of the $10 a month for three years, which is currently what the council has approved.
Without an administrative fee?
If you eliminate the, if you do what council member Cruz suggested, which is eliminate the administrative fee, eliminate interest, extend the payment period out to five years, then that would make your monthly payments at $5 a month over five years, as opposed to $10 a month over three years, which is what the council currently has approved.
Okay, do I have a second? Okay, that dies for lack of a second. So, do I have any other directions?
I move that we stay, take the motion with our original plan. I think we looked at it from a fiscal responsibility, especially with the unknown, with droughts coming up. I think we're looking at having money when we need it for maintenance, so that we all have water when we need it. I think our decision in the beginning was the best decision for the services. Ultimately, we're looking at, if we don't do the right thing, then we're going to raise the rate to everybody. So my motion is that we keep our original plan.
I would second that motion.
Call for the votes, please.
Vice Mayor Singleton?
Aye.
Councilmember Payne?
Aye.
Councilwoman Campion?
No.
Councilwoman Cruz?
No.
Mayor Powers?
Aye.
Sorry, I'm sorry. Motion passed, three to two, with council members Campion and Cruz.
Okay, communication, city clerk before.
Just a couple of quick reminders. On November 12th, there's a Parks and Recreation meeting here in the council chambers at 7:00 PM. A planning commission meeting on November 13th at 6:30 PM in the council chambers. Reminder, the city offices are closed on Tuesday, November 11th, in honor of Veterans Day, and that takes us to our next meeting.
Okay, comments by staff. Tony, you've been pretty quiet today.
Hey, you didn't need to be including in the strategic plan this time. I'll get that three or four.
I'll get you next time.
Yeah. Just a couple of quick updates. We've got our third and final, hopefully zoning ordinance committee update meeting on November 20th, 4 to 6 PM. We're still looking for a place to hold the meeting though.
I'm sorry, say that again, when is it?
We're still looking for a place to hold it, so.
November 20th, right?
It's November 20th, 4 to 6. We'll send that reminder out to the committee, and post it on the website and whatnot.
Okay.
Folks of the probably, Donald's actually getting picks up in the air there at Twin Cities, they're off the freeway. L&amp;L Wood Products is also progressing. Seminole Horn and Shutteron should start under construction here shortly, and hopefully we'll get our study open in the next few weeks downtown. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Mr. Winkler?
Nothing to report.
Okay. Hines, Paula, chief?
Nothing to report.
Steve? Well, that's a liberal lawyer that doesn't want to talk.
Right.
Boy.
Just a reminder. There's a blood drive at Littleton Center this Thursday, I believe it's 3:30 to 5:30, Liz?
Yes.
That's kind of the, that's a city-sponsored one, isn't it?
Yes, it is sponsored by the city.
It is sponsored by the city, and I believe it's for the public, starts at 3:30.
Yeah, 3:30, yeah.
Councilmember Cruz?
Oh, I have nothing.
Nothing, geez. Vice Mayor?
I just want to mention, maybe, I hope I'm not stealing your thunder, but I know that we've seen, or y'all have seen the evaluation thing for Mr. Bearman on our agenda a couple times. It's not that there's anything wrong, it's something that we do yearly, is the evaluation of our city manager and our Mr. Rudolph. So, it's a consensus of council, we have, we think he's doing a great job, and a grand job, and that's all I got.
I got something that everybody forgot, the Kevin Town Memorial Run, which was a blast.
No, I actually have, I enjoyed, no.
Stop. We really had a good time. It started off raining, but it ended up really sunny. We had quite a few bikes out there. My daughter and I went in her '63 Ford Galaxy convertible, and we actually did get to take the top down for a while. Oh, yeah, we did.
No, no, it's nothing. No, it's more-
Yep, no, it started, we went two places, and then it was sunny, and everybody was having a good time. It got really, it only rained in the first place.
Yeah, excuse me, Mayor, but I did want to tell you, sunshine got shiny after we were drenched first. And that would be the people that actually have the fight.
I didn't drench.
She, yeah.
I have to. But anyway, it was really good, we made some good money, and we're going forward with, hopefully, to do something real soon. And I think everybody, in spite of the fact that it was a very sad day of losing two police officers the day before, we tried to do what we could for Officer Town and the city. So with that, I'm going to close the meeting.